So we can start off with Globe Park. We have Joanna Prokopio from the URI Snap Ed Program. And we also have Ashley Plant from SEDEXO. And I'm going to turn it over to Joanna.
Speak right there.
Right here?
Right there.
Yes, that's good.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Jo-
Bring the mic down.
There we go. My name is Joanna Remans and I work with the URI Community Nutrition Program. And we had the pleasure of working with Globe Park Elementary 5th Grade students this year on our Students Take Charge project. And I am anxiously awaiting a student that hopefully will be here in the next few minutes. And the goal of this project is to partner with the health teachers, the classroom teachers, administration, and SEDEXO to make positive, healthy changes to the school lunch menu with the help of students and their recipes. So a huge part of this project was training students on how to do an interview with an adult at home about their favorite fruit or vegetable-based recipe. So we did a lot of practicing in class, and then they went home and they interviewed adults at home. And they all brought their recipes in. Ashley and I partnered, and we took a look at the recipes to see what would be feasible to serve district-wide. And our two recipes that we tested out were, one was a veggie jolof rice, which was submitted by Ni, who hopefully will be here. And then we had a broccoli chicken stir fry submitted by Jacob, both 5th grade students. So we had special recipe days at Globe Park. One was a Friday in February, and one was actually last Friday, where the 5th grade students would help us to serve all the students in school sample sizes of the recipes. They would walk around with signs that read, "Would you try the recipe again, yes or no?" And they had buckets. Students that would try it again would put it in the yes bucket. Students that would not would put it in the no bucket. And the majority of the school, so it was 74, 76% would eat the veggie jolof rice again, and 84% would eat the broccoli and chicken stir fry again. So we've been in touch, and it looks like Ni's coming in. Perfect timing. We've been in touch with Ashley to discuss how we can add these recipes to the school lunch menu long-term and district-wide. And again, we've found that when students have a voice, when their voice is listened to and they make an impact throughout the school, they're definitely more likely to participate in projects like this. And as the URI Community Nutrition Education Program, we offer technical assistance with projects such as the Students Take Charge Project. So I do have a copy of the letter from the students requesting certain items on the school lunch menu, which I will share with you. And I also have copies of the recipes, as well as a copy of the recipe book, which has about 25 recipes that the students submitted. So we are really excited to share that with you. And I'm going to introduce my friends. Hello, come on in. Hi, Ms. Kenna. So Ni is here. Hi, Ni. Do you want to come on over and say hello? So Ni is our veggie jolof rice student, so he's so excited to share the recipe with everyone tonight. And we're going to have everybody vote on your recipe. How does that sound? Good?
I'm excited.
Is there anything you'd like to say to the school committee about the project?
Well, thank you for, like, making it better this time. But a little kid said it was too spicy, but everyone liked it.
Yes. I will say, we went through, and I do have to thank SEDEXO. This is the first school district we've done this project with that has offered to taste test both recipes and have school-wide recipe tasting day two times in a row. And Ni, who this recipe is very near and dear to his heart, the first time around we tried this, he said, "It's not, this isn't what it's supposed to taste like." So SEDEXO tried again, and each time, Ni, would you say it's gotten a little bit better? Yes, definitely. So the recipe that we have to share with you tonight, the copy of the recipe is Ni's traditional recipe. As we know, with school lunch, we do have to follow certain guidelines. So it is a variation, but the students did say it had a different taste to it. It was a little bit spicier than usual. So we are really excited that we're bringing some different flavors to the school lunch menu and having a variety of opportunities for students to try different foods. So with that being said, Ni, would you help me to pass these around?
Sure.
So everybody's going to get a ticket. One ticket represents the chicken. The other ticket represents the rice. You'll see it right on the back. And then Ni is going to come around with the buckets, and you're going to put the ticket in the yes bucket if you would, in fact, try this again, or the no bucket if you would not. And we always tell the kids to please be honest. So please be honest. Okay? Want to take these?
Sure.
I'm going to go pass around the tickets.
Mr. Chairman, while they're passing them out, may I just say a few words?
Of course.
I just want to say, Joanna and the students came to the last Health and Wellness Subcommittee, and everyone at the Subcommittee was able to try both recipes, which we enjoyed. So I will be enjoying these again for a second time. But we had a great meeting, and Jacob's family was also there. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight. And Ni's family was also there. And we had a great, we had a great meeting with them. So thank you again to Joanna and the URI Snap Program for all they do. This is our second year, second year with Joanna, because they did a program two years ago. Was it two years ago? We started pre-COVID and finished it last year at Harris. So thank you so much. And thank you to Ashley for providing the food for us. Hey, why didn't you even try it yet?
Then you said it right.
How old is he? How are you tonight?
Did you have dinner yet?
We've got to hurry up and munch on this, because we have to vote.
I'll tell you what, this is good.
Why don't you step by me? Both. Ni, good job.
Oh, hold on, let me try to get broccoli again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kick. A little kick to it, Hunter.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Just woke up.
I just have one question. Can I have the recipes? Oh, my goodness. Those are delicious. And I'll tell, I'm not a big fan of spice, but I'll tell you what, this is delicious.
And each student is also, they got copies of all the recipes that-
This is good.
Ms. Joanna did a fabulous job, and their whole URI staff. We had a great time converging into the cafeteria and taking over the space, and it was a wonderful, wonderful experience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And these go really good together.
Why don't you give it right here? Give it to her super.
The book is the same thing we have digitally, right?
Yes, you do.
I'm good with that.
Yes. Okay. Would you like this one? And then this is a letter from the students.
Excellent.
Wait, did you get your stuff? Did you get your stuff?
That's what I'm looking at now, digitally, I haven't taken it.
Okay.
Chicken, a little bite, too.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for tasting the recipe and for voting. I will say, I think it's unanimous. I don't see any votes in the no container. So Ni, wonderful job. Thank you.
Good job.
And if there are no more questions, we will move on. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. So next, we have Christina Claiborne and Sam Stockwell. I'm sorry. So we're going to, we're going to go down there. So if the committee would, would just step off of the stage, we have a presentation from the Annenberg Institute. And this presentation is, is going to be the summary of a project that was done about our summer programming here in Windsocket.
Oh, okay.
So if-
What thing again?
It's, yes, yes. This is the actual-
They're the ones that did the study?
Yes, yes.
It's basically this.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Stockwell. I'm not sure how we're going to follow the delicious food, but we have unfortunately not brought any food with us, but we will do our best. I'm Sam Stockwell with my colleague Christina Claiborne from the Annenberg Institute at Brown University. We are just really thrilled to be here this evening, talking with you all about summer programming. This work comes out of some work that we've been doing at the Annenberg Institute through the Ed Research for Recovery Project around measuring and improving summer programs in Rhode Island. So we've been working for the past couple of years, trying to help districts incorporate research, evidence, data, to really strengthen their summer programming. And we've been working with five districts over the last year specifically to do some deep dives into their actual summer program data. And Windsocket Education Department has just been a really wonderful partner in this work that we have been doing. So we are going to present just a few highlights from this analysis that we've done, and then wrap up our time by just sharing a little bit about some of the national impact that we've seen from the work going on here in Windsocket. So I know that summer programming has been talked about and presented on in this venue, so we won't spend a lot of time discussing actual kind of program structure, but just by way of reminder, we're talking about K-5 summer programming here in Windsocket. It was about 500 students that participated across six elementary schools, about 150 teachers, and 28 total days of instruction offered over the course of the summer. And in our deep dive that we did with the Windsocket team, we focused our examination on four key areas of data. So we looked first at summer program enrollment. The summer programs were open to all students, and so we wanted to get a sense of who are the students that are signing up for these programs? What does it look like across school by different groups of students? Next, we wanted to look at patterns of attendance. So over the course of the summer, what did attendance actually look like? Average daily attendance, average days attended by different schools, by different groups of students? And then third, we looked at teacher and family experiences. So we worked with the district to administer a teacher survey at the end of the program and a family survey at the end of the program to try to get a clearer sense of how teachers and families were actually experiencing the summer programs. And then fourth, we looked at academic outcomes. So we used spring star testing data, so sort of district benchmark testing. We got spring scores. Program ran over the summer. And then we also brought in fall score, so after the program, to do some analysis of academic outcomes for students who attended the program compared with students who did not attend the program. We met with the district in the fall to present a really, kind of a whole host of detailed insights that we were able to pull out from this work. And today, we just wanted to highlight four, sort of one in each of these buckets that we looked at. I'm just going to preview these. Christina's going to talk a little bit more in depth about each one of these with some supporting visuals. But first, we saw a really high enrollment and participation across all the schools and across the district. Second was that we saw pretty strong attendance, especially in Sessions 1 and Session 2 of the summer program. And then third, overwhelmingly positive experiences and positive responses from teachers and families. To put it very frankly, people absolutely love this program. Those who taught in it, those who participated in it. And then the fourth, we saw statistically significant impacts on math scores for students in kindergarten and grade one who attended the program when we looked at their fall star testing. So again, these are just sort of four key highlights that we wanted to pull out. Christina's going to share a little bit of supporting information about each of these.
Thanks. Okay. So the first big win, as Sam said, was that we saw high levels of enrollment and participation across those six sites that supported these summer enrollers. So we see that proportionally across these six sites, the number of students who attended is very similar. Those are in orange. I think overall, about 25%, about a quarter of students, grades K to 5, participated in this program across all six sites. It still looks blue on this slide here, but in blue, you have enrollers, and we defined that as students who enrolled but did not attend any days. And those are quite low. You can see it, it's like 5, 2, 0 at Globe. Quite low, meaning you had very few students who enrolled in the program but then didn't attend. And we actually didn't see that across a lot of the other schools that we studied. And also nationally, this is a big challenge. Students who enroll often don't participate at the levels that you all saw. This was our first big win here. And after talking with the Windsocket team, it seemed as though the big thing that you all wanted to highlight was like, you know, the way that you communicated the program to students, the way that you ensured that they were excited about the program, things like that. Huge win, as shown in the data here. The second is that we saw both strong attendance and strong enrollment throughout all three sessions, although in Session 3, we do see that there is lower enrollment, about 100 fewer students enrolled in Session 3. And also in Session 3, there is lower average daily attendance across the sessions. So in Session 1 and Session 2, they had similar average daily attendance, around 72, 74%. And then Session 3, 66%. And interestingly, we did do some interviews with site coordinators across the six sites, and they said that this is what they saw observationally, right? They said, "Oh, we saw fewer students actually enrolling in Session 3, and we saw fewer students attending even, even once they'd enrolled." And I think after talking with some of you all from Windsocket, you're thinking, okay, we might make some program changes based on this data, which is really encouraging to hear that the data is informing how you're thinking about like costs and benefits of the program for students. The third one is, as Sam said, teachers and families reported overwhelmingly positive experiences. We had a number of questions on the survey for teachers and families, but we pulled out five big things here, where teachers and families agreed and where they had really high levels of agreeing with the statement here. So the first is that it helps students build relationships with peers. 100% of teachers agreed, 98% of families agreed, so really, really immensely high. Same with it helping students build in relationships with teachers. The third is that they agreed that it helps students communication, so build those communication skills, practice communication throughout the program that would then build into the fall. They agreed it was academically engaging, and they also had really high levels of reporting that their perceptions of students improving academically. So that's not based on like any type of test scores, but just like their perception of their academic improvement for their students. The last one here is for academic outcomes. So as Sam said, we looked at spring star scores, and we looked at fall star scores for a post-measure of the summer program. When comparing these types of academic outcomes, it's pretty hard to try to like figure out an apples-to-apples comparison, right? Because the summer attenders were a bit different from those who did not attend the summer program on average, right? Thinking about demographics, thinking about differences by grade, differences by academic performance going into the summer program. So we did some statistical modeling here, and we tried to control for a lot of those demographics and those academic measures going into the summer program. And we do see that in grades K and 1, summer attenders had higher fall math, or yeah, fall math scores compared to non-attenders, and that result was statistically significant. So in grades K and 1, I think it was on average about 20 points higher, summer attenders versus non-attenders. We did not see that for grades 2 through 5 in math. Doesn't necessarily mean that it wasn't there, just means that like, based on our sample size and the ways in which we can control for things, we're not sure that there, there are things that we could pull out. But having, seeing this in grades K and 1 is, in fact, a huge thing to see. These things are hard, especially with like a six-week program, and especially given all the different considerations and the fact that we're using fall test scores that are several weeks out from the summer program itself. Yeah, very cool. I think that's it. I'm going to hand it over to Sam.
So one of the most fun pieces for us in doing this work has been sort of sharing some of these results. And so as a, as a part of the Ed Research for Recovery Initiative, we've published a few products that have been highlighting the work across Rhode Island, and then specifically here in Windsocket. So we published a case study that looked at some of the research-based design principles that we'd highlighted in a previous brief, and examined the ways that Windsocket put some of those research-based design principles into practice, balancing local constraints, local needs with what research recommended was most effective for students. And that has really, in our work across the country with top researchers, I was saying to folks before this, we, we presented this to Jennifer McCombs, who's sort of one of the top researchers on summer programming, who wrote the original design principles brief for us, and she was thrilled. She was so thrilled to see the ways that Windsocket was navigating local challenges, balancing research recommendations, and really making decisions that were going to best serve their students. And so we have been publishing this and working with, with folks across the country, working other networks of summer, summer districts, and trying to get this, trying to get the word out. We recently published an op-ed in the 74. It's an online education forum for lots of different articles that has, has been getting some recent traction, highlighting some of the work that we've been doing, the importance of capitalizing on summer, and specifically referencing the case study and the work that's been taking place here in Windsocket. And so part of the work of, part of the work that we do around research use in schools, we believe that it's really important, that it's really, really valuable, but it always, the importance and the value always needs to be held in balance with your specific organizational and district values. And we saw that here in Windsocket, and it's been something that we have been really thrilled to highlight, and we hope it's something that can be continued to spread in the work that we're doing as districts are working to serve students and families as best they can. We are happy to take questions at this point, if anyone has them. Otherwise, our contact information is up there, and we'd be, be happy to connect as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you. We are continuing the work.
My mouth is still watering from that food.
Again, I want to thank folks from Globe Parks, Globe Park, for that wonderful food that we, we enjoyed. And I want to thank the folks from Annenberg Institute for that, your presentation. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Also to follow up, just want to say kudos to the administration and the teachers who put on that summer program, and also kudos to the students who were excited about signing up. And hopefully, here we are at the end of April. Summer is just around the horizon somewhere, so hopefully we're able to continue a similar program with similar administration and teachers supporting it, and with the students getting engaged once again. So great job, great job.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. Next, we'll go into public comment. And for anyone addressing the school committee tonight during Good and Welfare, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. We ask you to please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during Good and Welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team, or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee tonight? Seeing and hearing none, Dr. McGee, recognitions and announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start with my announcement, I just want to thank both Joanna from URI Snap Ed and Ashley from SEDEXO for their, their assistance and their work in providing this opportunity for our students at Globe Park through the Students Take Charge Project. I also want to recognize Ni, who is here, and all of the other students who played a part in this wonderful project, which really empowers our students in their schools. And that's really, you know, kind of what it's all about, is, is providing opportunities for our students to, you know, take an active role in their education. And this is one, you know, wonderful example of the, the district, and specifically Globe Park and SEDEXO and URI for providing that opportunity for our students. Secondly, I would like to thank Christina and Sam from the Annenberg Institute for being here this evening. As, as you stated a second ago, Mr. Burke, I also want to thank the administrators and the teachers and the students and the families and our community partners as well, who played a large role, have played a large role over the last two summers, coordinating our summer programming. And, you know, we're looking forward to, we just started meeting with our community-based partners this week, and we're planning on, you know, a, an equally impressive and strong summer program this summer. So I want to thank everybody who played a role in, in the very hard work. And clearly, we saw tonight through the presentation that, that our summer programming had a very positive impact on those students who participated. Lastly, I just want to announce that our incredible, incredibly talented theater arts program led by Mrs. Jen Maello at the high school will be putting on Hairspray the Musical. There will be three evenings when that, that musical will be run, May 4th, Thursday, May 4th, Friday, May 5th, and Saturday, May 6th. I think many of us here have been to the productions over the years, and it really is like attending Broadway right here in Windsocket at the high school. So looking forward to Hairspray the Musical. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I want to say that, talking to Ms. Maello, that we not only have students who are going to be involved in the production, but we also have staff, alum, and alumni. So it is going to be one heck of a production. It's almost a cast of thousands for this one. So it should be a lot of fun, and I look forward to, to see Mr. Depot portraying Edna in Hairspray. That should be a trip to see that. So I look forward to that. Next, we'll go into the approval of minutes, and I will make a motion to approve the March 22nd, 2023 open minutes, open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Costa. Any corrections, deletions? Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to take any items out of the consent agenda for discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Kapiskas?
I would like to discuss an item in-
I would like to discuss an item in purchases, just to bring to everyone's attention.
Yes.
Will you do that now?
Yes, please.
The last two items listed on the summary of the purchases is with regard to an ELA agenda that is being purch-, ELA curriculum, excuse me, that is being purchased with regard to the elementary schools that has been test piloted. We had a very good presentation on it at the Curriculum Subcommittee, and I'll summarize that when I give my report. But I just want everyone to be aware that the ELA curriculum that is listed there was fully vetted and piloted in our elementary schools, and it appears, based on the presentation, it was a very thoughtful consideration into deciding which of the two programs would be selected. I just wanted the committee members to be aware of that.
I'm glad you did that, because, was it your report that should come first, or should, and I know it's gonna appear in purchases, so I'm glad you did. So we'll hear more about it when you give your report. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, I'll ask you to give us your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, I am going to briefly share with you the personnel appointments and changes. So we have two non-certified positions since the last school committee meeting that we have added here in the district. One is a resource paraprofessional at Burnin Heights, and the second is a guidance secretary at Moon Socket High School. In addition, we have some hourly stipend extracurricular positions, which many of them are for beginning summer, our summer programming, as we approach that time of year. We have retire, a retirement, we have separation, two separations, and we have some leaves of absence as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee may have at this time.
Anyone?
Nope. Well, good.
I'll make a motion then to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now for our subcommittee reports. Ms. Kapiskas, would you give us the curriculum update?
How many pages?
Five, Ms. Costa, three.
That's not bad.
Not, no.
The curriculum subcommittee met on April 24th. After approving meetings of our prior, of our prior meeting, we entered into a long discussion and vote on the ELA, English Language Arts Elementary School Curriculum Mysteries are presented as part of the district literacy team, which was tried with reviewing various elementary school ELA curricula that are greenlit by ed reports. As everyone knows, RIDE requires us to purchase curricula that are greenlit by ed reports. The focus was on our district's need assessment, which focused on priority areas of need in district, in areas where RIDE said we needed more work, as well as our district ELA data. There were three high-priority focus areas, small group instruction for increased proficiency, differentiating needs of all students, especially the special needs of our student population. And that just doesn't, that doesn't mean just special ed, it includes MLL, dyslexia, other peak poverty, any other type of special needs, and our upcoming dual-language program. As we are limited to ed reports, greenlit curricula, the district met with seven vendors in depth for presentations, but decided to focus on two of the vendors. The decision was made to pilot those programs in all of our elementary schools, and we piloted in different grades in each school, including our special populations. It was piloted from January to present. The teachers piloting the program worked hard to help the district make an informed decision. In particular, they focused on programs, one called Wonders and one called Into Reading. Into, not enter, Into Reading. Wonders offered better PD, more focus on students with lower needs, and no need for supplemental materials. The program, that program isn't placed in Cumberland. Into Reading, which is in U S N school in Barville, provided no support for struggling readers, does not provide a leveled library unless the district incurs extra costs, and is not otherwise aligned to our curriculum. At the conclusion of the pilot, all participating teachers were asked 25 questions, including whether or not you would suggest the district purchase this program. Ten teachers who piloted Into Reading, and all, ten teachers piloted Into Reading, and all 10 advised against its purchase. Eight teachers who piloted Wonders unanimously said to purchase it. As a bonus, because we needed the add-on cost for leveled library for Into Reading, Wonders is actually cheaper by about $3,000. On motion of Mr. Bourget, second by me, we move this forward to the school committee. All voted in favor, and it appears on our agenda tonight, and the purchases portion has already been approved. Then next, we discussed the high school daily schedule. Mr. Guo explained that this discussion is part of an ongoing discussion related to the change in graduation requirements and the need for additional credit hours. It's part of the sit work, as well as part of the comprehensive school improvement status. As part of the process, the team looked into other districts and programs, especially other districts with embedded CTE programs. After much consideration, a decision was made to continue the work, but to keep the schedule as is at Moon Socket High School for the 2023, 2024 school year, while we keep looking at changes possibly for the 25, 24, 25 school year. It is anticipated that there will be some change finalized one year from now, based on the needs coming, but that will likely be decided in the fall of 2023. Some considerations, need for increased credit hours to meet the upcoming changes to the graduation requirement. Foreign language credits are a good example, especially for CTE students who have no time available in their schedules to take those foreign language credits. The matter will come off the subcommittee agenda for now, until some decisions are finalized administratively. The next curriculum school committee, which will be our last meeting of the school year, is on Monday, June 12th at 3:00 PM. Meeting adjourned at 3:40. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Any questions for Ms. Kapiskas?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Just a brief question, because I was looking back at the purchases, and all the elementary schools have purchased the curriculum. Hamlet Middle School has purchased a small amount here, but Villanova hasn't, so.
Hamlet is going to house our curriculum, I'm going to call it, our coaching team. So we are sending coaching materials to Hamlet, mainly for Heather and Jess to help support the rollout of the program. So although the materials are coming to this school, they're going to be used for that, primarily for professional development. That's why they're coded here, because the development will happen here at the school.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a curriculum subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, the finance subcommittee. We had a meeting this morning, this afternoon, felt like this morning, but this afternoon, and we, we covered three items. We covered, we reviewed the ESER III funds, and how we were going to spend them, with the majority will be spent, most likely, for the construction of our school for our, for our five, for our five-year plan. We also reviewed the fiscal 24 budget, which we have on our agenda, and we discuss a, the possibility of getting a joint WIDE RFP for our project manager that would take care of all our projects, which would include the Moon Socket High School auditorium, the labs in the high school, and various other projects. And we did not set a meeting date, because we want to wait till the dust settles, and we have a better idea what's happening with the schools. Mr. Perier, would you like to add some detail to that?
You, you pretty much covered everything, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I can go into detail on any of those items, if you'd like. I know, we're gonna talk about, excuse me, the budget a little bit further down, but as far as the ESER III spend-through goes, we are on track for spending through that at the end of September of next year. As the chairman stated, a majority of that next year is going to go towards our capital improvement plan. And then as for the OPM, we are currently working with Department of Education on formulating an RFP for an OPM that will cover all of those projects. So we're gonna have a one OPM that is really gonna get all these projects moving, and I'm really excited to work and utilize RIDE's knowledge in this, and we can get these projects rolling, so.
Thank you, Mr. Perier. Any questions for us? I'll make a motion then to receive and place on file a finance update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Let's go into unfinished business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the tobacco, nicotine, what conferences? What am I missing? There we go. A whole bunch of, I skipped a whole section.
We weren't saying anything.
I have to depend on the superintendent.
Sorry.
I will ask Ms. Morell to give us her update. Special education.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would have been okay if we missed, but that's okay.
We want to hear it, please.
So myself and Kelly Gerard have just returned back from the LRP Institute, which is the legal, oh my God, I just had it. Legal Resources Publications, they do a legal institute every year for special education directors, superintendents, and teachers. We were able to participate in the professional development, and we are able to come back with a lot of information around compliance, child fine, functional behavior assessments, behavior plans. So within the next couple of months, myself and Mrs. Gerard are gonna pull together all of the information, so that we, there we can review and make sure that we're current and that we are abiding by all these new regulations that have come up. So that's what's happening in our world for the next few months. In front of you are the numbers for the special education enrollment snapshot. This is as of April 18th, 2023. There has been a slight increase in, in numbers, though it's about 25 IEPs is the increase. So the last time, it was 26% where, and now it's, I'm sorry, it was 25 point, I think 5%, so I rounded up last month to 26%. Now it's exactly 26%.
Right.
For our population of special education. And that's from pre-K to 12. Any questions on the enrollment?
Questions or comments?
Again, like last month, this is the time of year where a lot of the students have gone through the MTSS process, and by the third quarter or fourth trimester is when students start becoming eligible for services.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Perier, I'll ask you to give us the financial update, the finance update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening is the February 2023 fiscal update. School department is currently projecting a $159,000 surplus for the year, as of June 30th. On the fiscal side, for revenues, state aid has been adjusted to the amount that was approved in June 2022 by the legislation, as our budget was finalized before the states. On the expenditure side, currently, all regular salaries are $3.23 million under budget at this time, and when netted with the employee turnover allowance of 1.470 million, that's to put the overall salaries 1.761 million under budget. We have moved salaries to ESER III for this fiscal year only, and I will state, when we get to the budget, we're gonna be bringing some of those salaries back in, so that we'll be able to have them beyond the life of ESER III. Substitute salaries line is projected to be $117,000 over budget, due to several vacancies spread across the district. Medical expenses are currently over budget right now, and for the first three quarters of the year, medical has been higher than anything we've experienced prior to the pandemic. At our next subcommittee meeting in May, our next finance subcommittee in May, we're gonna begin the discussion about potentially utilizing OPEB funds, or our retiree medical account, or our medical set-aside account to offset this increased expense. This is a concern, we're gonna keep an eye on this. We are getting close to the end of the year, so I wouldn't anticipate super changes, but really, it only takes a month's worth of bills to really swing this one way or another. So we're gonna continue to keep an eye on it going forward. Additional speech therapists, contracted nursing services, personal care attendants, and behavioral interventionists have been needed this year beyond what was originally budgeted. Again, these expenses have moved, moved off to ESER III for this year, but we have built them back into ESER III, we've backed, built them back into the general fund for next fiscal year, and I will again talk about that a little bit more as we get into the budget situation, or the budget section of the school committee agenda. We've currently moved expenses off the general fund at this time for building improvements, furniture and fixture, and technology-related hardware. We do have offsetting funds for these accounts and for these expenses, so they've been moved there. And then finally, we do have flexibility under ESER III, a little bit of flexibility under ESER III, and leap to move some expenses around. We're gonna keep an eye on this as we get closer to the end of the year, before we make a final decision on what we're gonna move where. At this time, if school committee has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
I'd like to look at 52121, the health and medical, Mr. Perier. These are February numbers, correct? These are the actuals for February?
They're through February, but we actually do anticipate, we do have expenditures basically through the middle of April. So while it does say a February 28th date, we actually do go beyond that, and we try to use the most current date, current information we have.
So the $9,890,000 that we've got is for our projection for the year. Not only includes February's actuals, but.
March's actuals and half of April's actuals. So we're actually more around the middle of April, as far as the projections go, even though, again, this says February.
And I'm not asking you to be a weatherman, but does it look like we're getting in requests down the road from May or June, or, I mean, is $9,890 a good, have we at least reserved for more?
Yeah, we do. Well, that's where the conversation next month is gonna be, as far as utilizing our set-aside account or our OPEB account. We do have money, that's what I'm anticipating expenses at June 30th, but again, you know, we have to take it week by week as the bills come in, and we keep an eye on it. So, you know, when we have that meeting, we'll have a better idea, I think, where we're gonna land June 30th. So I think it'll be opportune time to have that conversation.
It's the one section that we really have no real good hands on, because we don't know.
Yeah, and if you really look at it, it's, it's a $10 million line item, a budget line item for a $92 million budget. So I think it just tells you really the significance of our medical expense, and how it really dictates our budget.
It's the highest it's ever been. Right?
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Anyone have any comments, questions for Mr. Perier? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the finance update. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now I think we can go into unfinished business, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the tobacco, nicotine-free schools policy for second passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Do we have any other additional comments on this policy?
Nope.
Dr. McGee.
Changes.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the anti-hazing policy for second passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Kapiskas. Any questions, comments on, on this policy?
Changes.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now we'll go into new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the fiscal 24 general fund budget. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leclerc. Let's remember, once we approve the budget, we approve this budget, it's gonna be sent to the, to the city council, because they have to include that in their budget, and at some point, we will have a meeting with them to discuss and hear their questions with regards to our budget. So, Mr. Perier, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
So in front of the school committee here is the fiscal year 24 general fund budget. This is the first iteration of this budget at this time. We have, we have some revenue numbers that aren't solidified yet. We have our ask into the city that we need to hear back on, and again, the final number of state aid has, the state aid number has not been finalized yet, so we always see a little bit of movement on that. So really, just to kind of pull it back, I see us revisiting this probably in July to see where those revenue numbers are going to come in at. We'll be locked in at that point. So if need be, at that point, we can make some adjustments to the budget in time for the kickoff of the new fiscal year. This iteration of the budget calls for a 4% increase in the local appropriation for the city of Moon Socket. 4% is the maximum that you can ask for, so we've added that here. With the ending of ESER projected to be fiscal year 25, local appropriation really needs to rise now, in order to offset some of the revenue loss when we reach the end of our ESER funding. If we wait till fiscal year 25, I think it'll be a little too late to make any adjustments, so hopeful, hopefully, the city agrees with me, and we can get something locally this fiscal year. As a, as an aside, we did ask for 4% last year, and we did not receive any additional funding for this year. So we are working off the same, the same amount of money we would, or the prior fiscal year. we would, were the prior fiscal year. And another note, state aid luckily has significantly increased by approximately $8.5 million. That really brings our budget above 100, north of $100 million for the general fund, which is, I think is pretty significant. Again, a reminder, the final allocations have not been approved by the legislation, so that's why, once they are finalized, the finance subcommittee meeting will, will reconvene, and we'll have a discussion about any potential changes that we need to make for the budget going into next year. This time, the districts have begun to process of closing out positions related to our ESER II grant. This is because ESER II is coming to an end in September. Our ESER II, as I reported back at the last finance subcommittee meeting and then to the school committee here, is pretty much closed out at this point. June 30th, we're looking to have that grant fully expended. So some of the positions that were funded by ESER II will be going away next year. Luckily, due to the increase in state aid, we have been able to transfer some positions that were in ESER III into our general fund budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And the reason that's important is because now we're going to have these positions locked up long-term in the general fund, as opposed to having to deal with them when we get to the end of the ESER grant and really be scrambling for a funding source at that point. So for this year's budget, we really tried to take advantage of that additional money that the state gave us in order to transition things out of ESER III into our local budget so that we can now hang on to these things that have worked so well that we're able to get started because of ESER and continue to utilize them for the foreseeable future. Additionally, as a reminder, the district will be paying approximately 3.5% more across the board for salaries due to all the collective bargaining agreements that we signed. This is the last year of contracts collectively bargained, so going into next year, we're going to begin the collective bargaining process again. And due to some new, to go a little bit deeper, I know we made a lot of changes to our energy contracts this year, and I'm really looking to see a significant savings in electricity expenses next year. That goes for the new LED lights we've put in, the solar panel farm that we've invested in. And additionally, new contracts will be active June for us, so we're going to have a better rate than the one we were paying before with the new contract. So I know I did anticipate some savings, but I really hope to see quite a bit more significant savings on electricity than, than the ones that, the savings that I anticipated. Additionally, because of the additional money from the state, we are able to add property and equipment budget items back into the general fund for this year. And we'll discuss exactly what these budget, budget items will be used for through both the facilities and technology subcommittee. We'll see where we can apply those funds. And then, as I stated earlier, this is again a work in progress. We'll be following up again with the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee in the coming months to give updates as to the status and spend through on our ESER III funds. We're still trying to finalize how much we should be setting aside for potential capital improvements through the bond with the state. That's a really, a big key piece to ESER III at this time. When we get that final approval from the state for our capital projects, we're going to be able to go back to the ESER III and lock in the spending plan for the, the remainder of the life of the grant. Those are, those are the highlights really for, for the budget for fiscal year '24. And if anybody has any particular questions, I can answer them now. As the chairman stated before, if the school committee does approve this budget this evening, I will be sending it on to the city so they can see our 4% ask. And then I'll be reaching out to the city clerk to set up a potential school committee and One Socket City Council meeting, joint meeting. I like those meetings. I think it's good to get this all out on the table, talk about this, and let the city council know where we're at with our budget. So again, if, if there's any questions, we can ask, I'd love to answer them now.
Thank you, Mr. Perrier. Just like you said, this is a first iteration of the budget, and this is what's going to be going to the city council for their review and approval. But we know there's going to be changes. Depends on what the city decides to, to give us in additional maintenance of effort. The big one is what happens with the, what the state is going to give us towards our, the, the construction of, of our buildings. What impact will that, all of these funds that we're supposed to receive on our expenditures and our ESER III usage, and what reserves we may have to apply to make sure that we balance a budget? So we, we've got our eye on this, and the finance committee will be looking at this as, as things develop over the next couple of months.
Absolutely, and just as a reminder, we do have unreserved fund balances at this time and about, about $5.5 million of unreserved fund balance that, again, for emergencies only, you know, case of, case of emergencies, break the glass. That's, we do have some backup there. We've done a pretty good job of building that up, and we just want to be very smart going forward if we do have to dip into that for something that, you know, it's one time because we can't really, you know, build operational budgets off of fund balances. That's a way to get in trouble quick.
It's been good the way we've used the ESER funds thus far by taking things out of, you know, putting, be able to add positions and programs using those funds. But as we leach them right back into the operating fund, it means that if we get the money from the state, things will be status quo. We won't, and, and we'll just continue to maintain the department, the, the district as we've been maintaining it without making massive cuts. We won't have to do that because we'll have the funds.
And, and as a reminder, the state aid could significantly increase to for, come July. I mean, I know we've already projected eight and a half. Last year, our state aid went up from the March snapshot to the final, the final number in July by over $1 million. So, and that was a much smaller increase last year. So again, we'll wait to see those numbers finalized, and when they're finalized, we'll make, make moves going forward.
Any committee member have questions or comments?
The chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
What is our procedure for, for asking the city council for that 4% increase? Now, it sounds like we're going to send them this budget, and they're going to see a 4% increase?
Yeah, I noted.
That's how we're going to communicate it?
That's how I noted every year, is that there is an, an ask for an increase. It's emailed to the, the city's finance director, and that's how I've always communicated it.
So you communicated in presenting the budget plus your letter?
Yes, I, well, and, and again, I also mentioned it during the joint meeting as well that.
That'll come up afterwards.
That, that.
I mean, after they receive this, we'll.
Yes, yes, when we have, when we sit down and have the meeting, I will make note and point out that the school department is looking to capture a 4% increase in local, local aid.
Just raising the question to see what, what's the best way to, to ask? Not surprise, but ask.